We need to look at, first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. First minutes are for January the 17th, 2023, the regular town council meeting. Were there any corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
The second set of minutes are for January the 25th, 2023, which was a call work session. Any corrections to those minutes?
There on page 19, the very last sentence, I believe that might read, they would understand that officers were here to be their friends. And I have one other on page 21, right in the middle of the page where it says, Director O'Keefe agreed but stated that GASP, it's G A S B, Lou, which stands for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
GASP, not Gasp.
Any other corrections? If not, do I hear that we approved these minutes with those corrections being made? So move.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we have any public comments tonight, Lou, on the sheet? Thank you. Do any of these deal with any topics on our agenda tonight? If so, we can wait until we get to those. Okay, how about the Cox? How about Kathy Morris? Babe, okay. I think we'll just wait till we get there. Don't you think that'd be better? And let you come up and speak at that time. Okay, thank you. The first item on our agenda is old business, the noise ordinance amendment, and that you received the ordinance. Randy, do you want to talk any about that?
Sure. The police chief of the department has been working with our attorney to add some language to our noise ordinance that hopefully will make it easier to enforce and easier to determine when a noise is unnecessarily loud. And Raz and Emily, our attorneys, have added some provisions to that. Police chief has reviewed those and is good with those. And we're adding two sections to the ordinance, Section 19, Section 20, and then some additionals that have to do with the enforcement of the code, better enforcement.
After reading that, are there any questions or anything you'd like to add?
Chief, I have a concern about 11 o'clock to 7:00 a.m. I wonder if that could be 10 o'clock because things really don't wind down immediately.
It can be whatever the council wants to put on those. I think we had language in the existing ordinance that had the 11 to 7. Then we had another section that had it from 10 to 6, or 6 to 10.
Yeah, the only other part that does the 11 to 7 is the conducting, operating, or maintenance of any garage or filling station. I think everything else was the 10 until 6.
Yes, what's created is a creation or continuation of any unnecessarily loud, disturbing noises from the premises of any entertainment establishment, which is open to the public or the private. And those hours are from 11:00 to, 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. And it sets up that if the police set up 30 feet from where the noise disturbance is occurring from, from that distance, if they determine then that that is a disturbance to the quiet enjoyment of a resident or multiple residents, they can then enforce this ordinance. Section 20 then has the same language, but it applies to everywhere else in the community, not just entertainment establishments, residential neighborhoods, properties.
So I think number 20 was created to address one of the problems we've had in the past with a car being at the gas station blasting music and basically sitting there disturbing the homes that were close by. Because this says noise from any property. Am I right in saying that? Okay.
But if you want those hours to be 10 to 6:00 a.m. or 10 to 7:00 a.m., they can be. It's whatever the council chooses.
I'm just thinking about the time that is required for noise to wind down. Sometimes it doesn't cut off immediately. So you start at 10 o'clock and it may wind down temporarily. From recent experience, we ask people to quiet down and they don't.
So any other thoughts?
When they don't, if they can, the police force will start lighting.
Right, right. The only other thing I might suggest with 19 is if we wanted to do the 11 to 7, specify that that extra hour is for like the weekends, so Friday, Saturday type of thing. If we wanted to do the 11 to 7, but I'm fine with that.
So is it my understanding it's okay to leave 19 and add weekend, and then on 20, change that from 10 to 6? Is that my understanding, is that right? What is the council's desire?
I'm thinking 10 to 7 for both. Just way, not too long ago in October, we had an event that went on for two nights on a weekend. Two nights. Late. And the noise did not subside and they were asked to cut down. They did not.
So do we want to say in 19 then 10 to 6, as is the beginning of it, unless a permit is given by the town, like these other ones say, on written application to the town, permits might be issued? Because if we're having something at the farmer's market, for example, where there's a band or whatever, I'm assuming that we would shut down at 10, but as you're saying, it might take until 11, so you might have a permit for that type of situation.
And they are residents, it's brown farmers markets and we have to keep that in mind. And it says, "Permits may be issued by the town manager to individuals, civic, religious, political groups, or organizations, and other responsible individuals." And who's going to determine responsible individuals or organizations? Should that be the town council that issues that? I mean, if you're going to have something like that come before the town council.
I'm okay with that.
But you'd have to come so far in advance, too. You'd have to come so far in advance, you'd have to know well before.
It's called plan.
I'm fine with it being the manager. I think if it becomes an issue and we receive any complaints, we can change it to the council.
We can always put that also in town manager or his designate, and if he decides there is something going on, he can designate the council or the chief of police. And that's kind of covers, that language kind of covers, you know, like if town council needs.
But it can also mean somebody even farther down the line.
In the past, we've had street events in residential neighborhoods, and that came before the council. And rightfully so, because it was more than one residence on the street.
For number 19, that one is, who do we foresee being affected by that one? Was it written in anticipation of the junction coming in? Was it written for any downtown businesses? What was it written for?
Like one of these days, if you would ever have a band and the noise would be coming out and somebody complained about it, you would be more building, maybe the community center, somebody rented that. You know, we already put in a special use permit for the Alx Lodge, limits on all this stuff, so they can't go beyond what was authorized to them. Other establishments, can't think of any right offhand, but we could have some in the future that we don't know about that come to be junction being more of them.
What was the time set up for the Alx Lodge? What can we tell them?
All entertainment has to be contained inside the building at all times.
Inside the building.
Yeah. And they're required, when they have events like that, to have security. So if the party moves out into the parking lot, the security moves it back into the building. So can't disturb residential neighborhood, that's it.
So what are your thoughts, counsel?
I'm okay with the 11 to 7.
I'm fine with it, too.
So do I hear a motion?
One thing that I did not see yet, I may have read over, when it gets to the situation of, say, our law enforcement gets out, you said 30 feet from the origin of the noise to determine whether or not it's too loud? I think it needs, because you call them since judge, because what's too loud for you may not be too loud for me, or vice versa either way. That throws it into a, who's the one getting called, whether or not? Chief?
I think it just said, so that the sound coming from such establishment is plainly audible from the distance of 30 feet.
Right.
So I don't, I don't even think it says it's too loud, I think it's.
That would be, it would come under officer discretion.
And most of the guys know what we did is, we rode around town, me and Chief Boykin, and the average front door in our town is 20 to 30 foot from the center of the road. So we just kind of took that, if we can hear it from the roadway. All of my guys understand what we want and what we're trying to get out of this. So if they get called, we can hear it, all of them coming from the road, and we're going to go address it, get a warning to begin with. And that's just there to get a verbal warning. And then from there, we want to build a street and the ordinance that we got some fines in place that they can go from there. So if we can enforce them. We looked at doing some type of decibel thing, but there's so much other electronics out there, you got to calibrate them and doing all this other stuff, so it's just going to be like anything else, it's going to be officer discretion. You got a speed ticket or an award, it's taken. My guys are going to understand you already.
Yes, sir.
You get a DJ with a loudspeaker and you can hear it forever.
Yes, ma'am.
And a lot of these people play cat and mouse with the police. They talk and shut it down.
When you come around the corner, turn it down.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think that's, many people knew that there was no result, there was, nothing would come other than the verbal warning. Now we have something that will come with that. So I think that would stop.
Now we have sound town citations, so when we go, here we write it, and then, you know, they can come to the town. And then if it becomes an ongoing thing, then we can, because it's a town ordinance, it'd be a misdemeanor, it's keep on going.
The only other thing that I wanted to add in here, because there's always been confusion, when people read this, they don't realize that A is separate from B, and that B addresses any time during the day, but I just want to expressly add that in there. So where it says, "Certain acts and sounds deemed unlawful, non-exclusive," I would have the beginning of that sentence be regardless of the time of day. Noise of such character, intensity, or duration as to be detrimental to the life or health of any individual or to the enjoyment of one's property is prohibited. So that they then realize, it could be 2:00 in the afternoon, if you're blasting your music or doing something that is creating such an environment that everyone around you can't just simply enjoy their property, that's a problem.
So would you like to put in a motion to approve with the additions?
Yes. I make a motion, we add that to B, and the rest remain the same.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the Drake Street parking ordinance. Randy?
So at the last council meeting, the council agreed to prohibit parking on Drake, Drake between Elm and Washington on the west side. So we went through, staff went through and made amendments to our current parking ordinance, striking some sections that that decision is null and void, and adding in what the actual language would be, Drake Street from Washington to Elm Street on the west side. That's where parking will be prohibited. And then it takes out a few other sections after that on page 34. There's no parking anytime on Drake Street from the intersection of Elm South where 25 feet. Take that out because what you adopted last meeting null and voids that. Anything struck on here is staff's opinion of what no longer is applicable or needed because of the revision to section UU there at the very top of the page.
So if everyone understood the ordinance and approve it, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. So the motion carries.
Randy, I was looking at the parking prohibited on certain streets, that list. I was looking at Barnes Street, north and south side, from Washington Street to West Cross Street. Shouldn't that be east and west side?
That's language that's already in the ordinance, correct?
It's B, Barnes Street. I was going down the list, just looking at the different streets where parking is not permitted.
But that was already in the old ordinance, right? So we just need to get that corrected, Randy.
Okay.
That's the case. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Barnes Street, Streetscape. That's your, U again, Randy.
So the town's application for the Rural Transformation Grant, it was submitted. We had applied for 940, we got 675, did get confirmation from Department of Commerce, Rural Transformation, that the difference would have to be made up by the town. So we're to the point where the council wants to talk about and make the decision on the additional, like $275,000, that's needed to go forward with that. We did receive the grant agreement this week, Mayor Brown received that, docu-signed, and I can't figure out how to open it either. I asked Liz with the Department of Commerce just to email it to me directly, and I haven't gotten it yet. She said, she said that she would. I'm curious to see what that says, but they're wanting us to review that grant agreement and get that back to them as soon as we can. Now that we have it, we could have the actual grant agreement on the February 21st meeting agenda. But in the meantime, is the council agreeable to coming up with the additional local max for this, proceeding with the project?
I thought this was just for the resolution. Because we were missing the resolution in the original application. I didn't think that we were discussing money numbers tonight.
I thought this was just a formality.
We didn't do the application or the resolution at the time, and yes, we're asking the council to adopt that. If that's what you want to take care of tonight, we certainly can. Like I said, we just got the grant agreement. I'm sure you're all going to want to lay eyes on it before you say, yeah, let's, let's do that.
Yes.
So we can put the rest of this off till the 21st.
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we do that?
But we, we have to at least approve this resolution though, don't we?
Yes, the resolution has to be.
So I make a motion that we approve the resolution, but save everything else for the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the school resource officer. Chief Winston.
Good evening, again. So last week, we had, last week, we had a closed session with the, I'm sorry, work session, with the information I had at a time with SRO. We haven't, last night, the school board met, I didn't have opportunity to go talk to them because I didn't have any information to go talk to them about. So tonight, I was seeing if y'all had made a decision, or maybe we can move forward with being on top of the board, education, and see if we adopted the parking, and if we move forward, if we back the board.
Counsel, what are your thoughts?
Is there any chance that we could sit down with the board of education and talk to them about all the money and time and police effort that we've put in to keep them with traffic in the morning and afternoon? And let them understand the dollar amount that the town has spent? And maybe they can come up with funds.
I can ask, if that can be arranged.
I think they need to understand how much the town has already expended on traffic control, well in 10 years. In the morning and afternoon.
It's been longer than, however, Nashville, however long Nashville elementary has been there, it's been before my time. I knew all the previous chiefs before me, they, they definitely seen that, that we deal with every day.
And they never offered any help at all, so it was always up the town. And it's a dollar amount attached to that, and they need to understand that. I think we need to sit down and have a discussion.
Chief, are you waiting for an authorization from us, the council, to proceed to talk to the school board?
Yes, ma'am, I want to go with them with, with an option and, and have something to talk to them about and say that, you know, we're willing or we're not willing, or let's sit down and move forward in August. I'm just trying to get some options so that when I go and do talk to them, I've got some stuff to back it up with what I'm talking about.
Well, all this grant money that they received.
Right now, it's currently all allocated to Nash County Sheriff's Office and Rocky Mountain Police Department until August.
So can we hold it off until August?
There's a possibility of that, and then it may be a possibility that we don't have the opportunity to do it and it continues to go. Be the responsibility of sheriffs.
So is the sheriff receiving funding right now for someone to be full-time at the elementary school?
What they're doing right now, because they are short with manpower, like everybody else is, they are paying their officers off-duty pay to go up there and work part-time. I don't remember the numbers, between $3,000 and $40 a hour that they're working up there, and there's someone there, depending on what school, I think the SRO, the officers that are there, they're splitting it, they're either at Cooper's or they're at Nashville. And it staggers between daytime, morning time and daytime, how it goes and how they sign up for it, is what I'm aware of right now.
I guess my question would be, is there any way to receive whatever funds they're getting to cover Nashville to help supplement what our officer receives?
The brief meeting that I had with the superintendent is that that's not going to be possible until possibly later conversations, and it's going to be the 23, 24 school year in August.
I understand why it's important, I think, for us to get in there now before a permanent person is allotted by the sheriff's department. I think you all have already created a great relationship with students, I want to keep that. I know there are tons of studies out there that talk about, you know, reduction of crime rates and increased graduation rates and all of the things that go with it. I would be willing to go forward with this, but with the full understanding that a discussion does need to be had with the school board, that this is a one-time funding, that they, if they're receiving money to fund these positions, Nashville is under their charge, and we should be receiving funds for the officer to be doing that.
Yes, ma'am, that's my hope moving forward. If we could get it done now, and with the, they've already had my, I've expressed to them that that is my goal, is that we're doing this to get our foot in the door with them, but come August, when they sit down and they go on their budgets in June and July, is that my wish is to get whatever allocation of money Nash County Sheriff's Office is getting, that be allocated to us to supply the officer there.
But I would say before we allocate $55,000, we need to have a sit-down discussion, because it's all hearsay, so-and-so said this and that. I'd like to have one, have on to have on. And so they understand where we're coming from. The school population is 693 students. 291 of those come from the town of Nashville. Town limits. That's 42%. I just think this is a big burden for the town of Nashville, considering the fact that we do traffic control in the morning and afternoon.
I think at the end of the day, though, it becomes a benefit, not a burden, from what potential outcomes come from having an officer in the building. It benefits all of our citizens because it reduces, you know, drugs, crime, increases graduation, and I think in the long run, it will be a benefit, not a burden.
All about safety and also concerning about the taxpayers of Nashville, the burden that they have.
Where did you obtain those numbers for the total students?
Crime assistance.
I wonder if we could authorize our town manager and the police chief to establish a meeting with the superintendent to have this discussion, so that they, that we are on the same page with them, and they would have an understanding that we're willing to initiate this, but if we are going to continue with it, the town fully expects the school board to provide like funding for what it has done in the past with the Nash County Sheriff's Office.
Maybe take some figures.
I mean, they're in the process, or beginning their process of doing their budget for next year, just like we're getting ready to. So now is the time to get in front of them.
Yes, ma'am, when I spoke with, I sat down with myself and Chief Boykin, talked to Dr. Ellis and Dr. Farah, and they said, once I talk to them, there's a, I don't, I forgot the committee that he called it, that we need to talk to them and to the school board. And they're the actual ones that decide, they're just the facilitators that are arranging the meeting. So that's why I was in hopes of doing this, so when I go, I have some meat and potatoes to kind of talk to the school board about that. This has gone on for, I know, 20 years, and I feel like we should have been at least obligated, not obligated, but some checks and balances maybe should have been better done and invited us to talk to see if we, one, were able to participate and were willing to, before it just automatically got given to the sheriff offices as it's located in the middle of the town.
I'm not willing to commit $55,000 of taxpayer dollars, and to have some kind of understanding right now since we're today.
What about the rest of the council?
What about if we, what about if we did authorize $55,000 for the chief to go forward with what his plans are, with the understanding that we would hope that next, after they finish their budget, that we be included in their budget for his sum of money? And if they didn't, then it's $55,000.
Hope he's not planning on something that we can count on.
That's a plan. Our plan is to take the $55,000 off the table if you don't help us out.
Yes, sir.
He said, get him in the door.
Can you put that in the form of a motion? Well, it's just.
How's the rest of the council feel before I put it in the form?
Well, this is just for him to consider, isn't it? All right, motion.
I, I think what you're saying is go forward with the $55,000, correct? Now? And then when budget season comes, the understanding is that this is a one-time $55,000, that we are to receive whatever the sheriff's department and the Rocky Mountain Police Department.
If we don't receive it, then we'll take you back.
I'm okay with that.
About, can't understand that? That's my motion.
All those.
Yes, sir, and that was my goal.
Let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed?
I think, I think the sentence does have a good point, though. I think even in okaying this, I think we do need to have some sort of discussion with someone from the school board or whoever it is, that's the person in charge of this, to let it be known, the expenditures that we have done and the manpower that we've put forth, and the fact that this is a one-time, and we do expect to be working together in the future, but receiving those funds.
I was wondering if you could come up with a dollar amount that we've expended in the mornings and after and call the police involved.
How far back?
As far as you want to take it.
Yes, ma'am.
Because if that is real planning.
It might be worth considering, Chief and Randy, calling the superintendent's office and ask to be put on the school board's agenda.
That was my goal after, they met last night. I didn't have any information to give them, kind of like, this is what we're willing to do, if you're willing to do this. Yes, sir, so that's next month's agenda meeting, yes, that's to go.
That'd be great.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. The next item is new business, and it starts with the rezoned request. Sherry, I'm going to let you talk about it so people will know what we're talking about that aren't involved before the people speak, okay?
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So, Landon Forest Equity LLC is requesting to rezone approximately two-point-five-one acres out of a twenty-three-point-eight-three acre tract located on the northwest corner of Oak Level Road and East Old Spring Hope Road, Nash County Parcel ID zero-three-two-five-four-zero, pin number three-eight-zero-one-one-one-seven-six-one-zero-seven-two, in the town of Nashville, ETJ's jurisdiction. They're wanting rezoning from A1 agricultural to B1 highway business district, per Division Nine of the Nashville zoning ordinance. The purpose of the rezone is to allow the opportunity for the property to be used as small residential operation. Also, in the.
Retail.
Small retail. Yes, small retail operation. The, in the current area, the zoning districts includes A1 and B1. The land uses in that area consist of agricultural, commercial, and residential, which includes Harper's Nursery, Langley Automotives, and Oak Level Cafe. And also with the future land use map, the future land use map designated totally different in that area shows everything in the area as low and medium density residential. And that's also in the staff report. So looking at the staff report on page forty-seven, it shows the zoning, where you have mostly agriculture, and then the one piece that's on the corner of East Spring Hope Road and Oak Level, opposite from the subject property, which shows the B1 highway business. And you see your future land use map designating everything in the light tan as low density residential, and the darker tan as medium density residential. In your packet, you also have photos of the issue property showing surrounding nearby properties, and also Google Earth Pro Map. And also on page forty-nine, you have your findings of facts and order in which all notifications were conducted as required with Chapter Eighteen Land Use Regulations and Code of Ordinances. And as far as the application goes, and I'll just read this right quick. So the applicant has submitted, is in compliance, again, with Chapter Eighteen Regulations. It was in on time. So number one is asked to describe how the rezoning request is consistent with the town of Nashville Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and any other official plan that is applicable. The applicant states is although not residential in nature, this rezoning to B1 of just the two-acre site would allow for a business that would complement future residential growth in area, as presented a proposed small retail operation would be cited on the parcel to help anger future development. Two, explain how the rezoning request will update the existing ordinance if there is any inconsistency with the town of Nashville Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and any other official plan that is applicable. The proposed rezoning to B1 would be in keeping with a neighborhood services designation, which promotes uses that serve the surrounding communities and neighborhoods. The proposed site is just south of already classified properties of the same designation on the future land use plan. Three, explain why the rezoning request would be appropriate, beneficial, and in the general public interest of the area sought to be rezoned. The applicant states services such as small retail can be complementary to the residential neighborhoods and be made more convenient access to goods that some residents may otherwise have to travel further away to obtain. Four, explain whether the rezoning request would adversely affect the adjoining property owners and alter the character of the area. A neighborhood retail store would not adversely affect property or the safety of those around it. A small site such as this would be complementary to current and future residential growth. And finally, briefly explain the accessibility and impact of adequate public facilities, services, fire, safety, infrastructure, parks and recreation, stormwater drainage, antipathy, et cetera, that is currently available at the subject property. The site is located on two state-maintained roads with connections to other thoroughfares. The proposed use when adopting all town and state regulations would not be an adverse impact on the current resources and infrastructure. And also in your packet, you have other required documents that's in there, including the meets and bounds, the site plan showing, I'm sorry, zoning exhibit portion of that two-point-five acre tract, that's on page fifty-four, and followed by a site plan of the, a preliminary site plan on page fifty-five. Also, you have on page fifty-six, your adjoining property owners of letters that were also mailed prior to the planning board meeting, and also prior to this, prior to tonight's meeting. And page fifty-seven, you have your dimensional requirements showing the difference between the A1 and B1 minimum lot size requirements and setbacks. Then you have your description of districts on page fifty-eight and fifty-nine showing the A1 and B1 description. And then you have your table of permitted uses, comparing the A1 and B1 permitted uses. And followed by, you have your consistency statement on page sixty-nine, which lists option one, no changes to the ordinance or plans if you approve it. Option two, if you deny, with no changes to ordinances or plans. And option three, with changes to ordinances or plans, which means you can approve it, but you have to miss your conditional reason. And page seventy, if approved, there's ordinance to rezone. And followed by, which is the last page, you have the planning board's recommendation. The planning board recommends to deny the approval based on it is not consistent with current usage and it is contrary to the recent, recently passed future land use map.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to go right down to the sign-up sheet, and when you come up front, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to discuss it. First is Ronnie Burnett.
Mayor, could you open the public hearing?
Oh, yes, I could. I forgot I was making this a public hearing.
And then if I move to a public hearing?
Okay, I moved to open this to a public hearing, and I now invite you up to speak. Ronnie Burnett.
Good evening. My name is Ronnie Burnett. I live at twenty-two forty. I am the current property owner of the property. I'll tell you that when they first approached me about buying the property, I had a lot of mixed emotions, because the property has been in my family for over, I don't know how many, more than a hundred years, but it's been for a long time. And I really had a lot of mixed emotions about it. But then I realized too, that I don't own a grain of sand that's in my sheep. I don't own that dirt, it's God's. And he had it for our Indian husband, and he's going to have it before I was gone. So I really went about praying and said, Lord, what do you want to happen? You want people to accept? You want people to hang on to it? You want a church to be built there? I don't know. You tell me. I was wide open, blank slate. And I did a lot of praying about it. I could go into a long story, I could do a thirty-minute storytelling and all about that, and a whole lot of details about it. If you ever want to know, you can ask me, but we can't do it enough. I finally reached the point where I felt God had given me a peace to go ahead and reach an agreement with him and say. So I did that. We signed a paper for that. They had a planning board meeting last year tonight. I came to that, I did not get up to speak, because I didn't really know that, really didn't know, you know, anything to speak about. Really, you're at the end of the meeting, and you see everything that went on, then I kind of like to say, hey, I'd like to say something, but it's too late for that. So anyway, I'm speaking tonight. The, this is of course at a crossroads, as they've shown you, the four corners there. Three of the corners already have commercial, retail sale, with whatever's going on and has been for years. Actually, this piece is the only piece that does not, it's been agricultural before, I guess. There again, go back those hundred, how many years it's been. So you've got the restaurant there, you've got Harper's, you've got Langley's. The diagonal crossroad from this. And Langley's is actually already zoned, the same thing that this is, they're asking for this property to be zoned. Langley's is, I remember, actually, I actually came to the meeting when they had the, when they built that building, and when that was approved then, some thirty or forty years ago, I guess, probably something on that range. But that's already in the Nashville planning zone. And it's already zoned to B1. So when you look at it, the traffic there, of course, is getting more and more every day, you're in a direction to go from there, the Alvin being built, I have crossed roads every day there on Oak Level to get my mail, and I can tell you, it takes longer and longer to get a crossroad. So that crossroads is just going to get busier and busier and busier, no matter whether, how y'all rule, that part is a done deal, it's happening, you can see it happening every day. My, when I, the planning board, when they came up with their decision, I was surprised, because I thought that is really, when you look at it, you've got three corners there, you've already got retail going on. This was mine, was the twenty-five percent that didn't have going on, the other seventy-five percent was already there and working like they were. And so I just didn't see the consistency. I came away scratching my head saying, you know, how can you have it on three corners, and in this corner you say, no, that's not consistent with what's going on? Actually, the seventy-five percent is what's happening, mine is the inconsistent right now that says. So the only thing I say to y'all tonight, when you make your decision, is just, I just ask you to be consistent. Look at what's there, look at what's going on, and be consistent when looking at this. I thank you for your time, and that's all I've got.
Thank you so much, Mr. Burnett. Next is Cox. Hey, how are you?
Council members. My name's Chris Cox. I'm from Goldsboro, North Carolina, one-on-four Twin Oaks Place. I'm here representing the developer of the project, Landon Forest Equity, be glad to answer any questions I can about the project. It's hard to follow what Mr. Burnett just said. He said eloquently, when we, I was the one that approached Mr. Burnett, maybe, I don't know, six months ago, and I had looked at the corner and saw the other commercial properties already there, and I said, well, this has got some possibilities. And after doing some research, first thing we looked at was utilities, zoning in the area, you know, that kind of thing, that's what we looked for. And then, and again, like Mr. Burnett, it kind of caught us by surprise that the planning board recommended denial. And after reading the notes, I wasn't there at the meeting, but it said they denied it because of, basically because of the comprehensive plan that was enacted last year. I've been on the planning board of one county for over eighteen years, nine of that I was the chairman, so I know a little bit about comprehensive plans. I did one, or was helping to do one. And the comprehensive plan is a guide, it's a general guide, it's broad spectrum, it's not site-specific. So there's other intersections in this area that are, you know, would fall under a comprehensive plan too, but this particular intersection is site-specific. There's already, like Mr. Burnett said, seventy-five percent of that corner is already commercial. So to say that it doesn't meet the comprehensive plan, it may not, but as far as what's the practical use of the property, and is it consistent with what's already there, that's a different story. This is a rezoning hearing, this is not a site plan approval hearing. So we have to look at, you know, what's the precedent? And there's already precedent. The, the building that my client's going to build is about a million and a half dollars. And that's a lot of taxpayers to the community. And the, it will hire local people, you know, from the community. We want to be good neighbors. We sent out twenty letters to the adjoining property owners in the area, and we got one back. And she's here tonight, she's going to speak after me. And I'll be glad to answer any questions she has as well. And so if there had been more of a, you know, more people showed up against it, you know, and maybe it'd been different. Any other questions that I can answer? I think, I think Mr. Burnett said it best. Just, we're looking forward to council to be consistent with what's already there. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much. The next person is Kathy Morris.
My name is Kathy Morris, and I live at twelve-oh-four Birchwood Court, Nashville, and I do not live in Oak Level, but I have property there. And I'm representing my family and a lot of people who are not here because they are old and feeble, and they're not able to get out at night, or even some not even in the day. But I respect what Mr. Burnett says and his wishes, I do. And I think if he wants to sell his land, because it is the Lord's land, and that's what he wants to do, then I feel like that's, that's his wishes. But I'm concerned about what is going to go there. Also, they said that seventy-five percent was already like that, but just to make sure you understand, Harper's is a nursery and it's agriculturally done. The car fix at place, I'm not sure how much retail they sell, but they do fix cars. And then the house on the corner is a rental home, that's no retail, but the store beside it is a cafe. I'm not sure how much that is called a retail. But anyway, I've got some reasons. Will Dollar General store advance Nash County to be a better place to live and work? And I put no. This is reason one, the community would not be beautified. I have a lot to say, but I'm going to shorten it. I have seen a lot of Dollar Generals built everywhere, but I don't ever see one getting a facelift. I just see new ones popping up everywhere. I did see on page fifty-five that you had up here, that there's a storm water runoff management area, it is ripe side of the road, and that certainly will not beautify the area either. Reason two, the community will have the rural feel, the rural feel gone forever. People move to the community because they like the country feel, and that will be taken away. The landscape will be gone. I think it would be better if it was something related to agriculture. Reason three is employment. I have searched on DollarGeneral.com careers. Washington Street, right here in Nashville, has four job openings from the corner of Oak Level and Old Spring Hope, that's one-point-seven miles away. The next closest one is three-point-four miles away, it's forty-one thirteen Sunset Avenue. It has five job openings. And then at Sandy Cross, pretty new store, it's four-point-nine miles away, and it has four job openings. And I continued to look. Well, that's thirteen job openings right there, and three stores less than five miles away from that proposed area. I continued to look through Nash County. I was shocked to see so many. Do you know, it's a total of sixty-nine job openings right now at Dollar Generals. I looked, January the twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, is when I looked it up, I counted them. And I made sure they were in Nash County when it said Rocky Mount. Sixty-nine. So I was wondering what kind of company would want to come and add another building when they can't take care of what they already have. Reason four is safety. I really feel like safety will be jeopardized. Without the number of employees that the business should have, there will not be enough eyes to watch the customers. There will be more crime. And what I have been told by sheriff deputy, he told me this, maybe criminal not listening, cameras in the Dollar General stores inside are of very poor quality. When he has gone in to investigate, he's looked at the cameras, you can't tell. He says the Dollar General needs to use upgraded cameras for protection. He said there are no cameras on the outside. And he said if they have so many robberies, then they may purchase one. I wanted to know how many robberies we had, but the Sheriff's Department is also short. They're short seven men this week. So nobody called me back to tell me how many robberies we have had. But I've been told the one at ninety-seven fifty-eight, where there's not much around, is robbed a lot. That was robbed a lot. Then we've got Rocky Mount Police Department, they are short an astronomical amount of officers. So the deputy sheriffs and their staff will have to pick up some slack for Rocky Mount and Nashville Police, they're not paying taxes out there. Um, they're not paying taxes out there. So the Nashville police is short one officer, which I'm thankful just that because I live in Nashville. Um, the Dollar General store, when they close at night, will it have the manpower to protect its employees and the surrounding people? Um, reason five, it is not healthy, it's not going to be a healthy store. They are not going to sell anything but the regular one, like the one in Nashville does, um, processed foods and frozen foods. There won't be any fresh fruits and vegetables sold in this proposed store. So it won't be anything unique about it. Just be regular. People are going to still drive to their grocery stores to buy healthy foods and the drive is close anyway and the trend is to eat healthy. Reason six, it will lower the value of a home. Um, I don't know who in here would love to live beside a Dollar General. People might want to shop there, but when you talk about living beside one, that becomes a different story. So that's another reason. Reason seven, we already have Dollar General stores in close proximity, as I have mentioned. Three stores less than five miles from the proposed area. There are a lot of other stores that meet the needs of the neighborhood. Um, well, we already have Dollar General. If they want to go there, you got one. We've got three less than five miles away. Um, we have other stores less than two miles away. And so other stores, like you can get a hot meal at Oak Level Cafe. If you want planning needs, a variety of items at Harper's Nursery across the road. If you want to get a convenience store goods, you can go to the convenience store at Birchwood. Um, you want to go to Walgreens, we're still less than two miles away. So the real Dollar General, um, is there, Mucho Mexico, Piggly Wiggly, you've got Foodline, you've got all these stores less than two miles away. Number eight, is it helpful? No, it is not going to be helpful. It's going to open up for crime and there's going to be signs on the door that says help wanted so criminals can read and they can see that it's going to be less help, less security. It takes away beautification. They're not going to sell fruits and vegetables. It causes more traffic issues. They're going to have trouble finding law enforcement to help out. And then they got people, it's a sign at Nashville, correct change or use your debit or credit card. So that is not helpful. Many schools and libraries don't even know that there's grant money from the Dollar General. They don't tell you. They don't tell you, try to help their community. It's not out. They send letters to the school or to the library. We can get money for that. And then you've got infrastructure. I wonder how that's going to work out.
Start summarizing, honey. Your three minutes is gone.
Okay. So, um, I'm worried about the stormwater being right there at the street and, um, what kind of company like Dollar General would want to come and add another building when they can't take care of what they have? There are YouTube videos and they're like how the dollar stores conquered America. On Dollar General is out of control. Um, it's so many, behind Dollar General's strategy to dominate rural America. CNN says dollar stores are everywhere. That's a problem for poor America.
Okay, we've got, we've got to close this.
Okay, well, you know what? The, the application is up there. Um, I was very confused about some parts that really need to be pointed out, if I may speak please. Um, it's number three. It sounds really pretty on paper, but it's like they have, um, they don't have to travel far to obtain. I said it's less than two miles, you can go a long way. So that right there, uh, that is...
But that's an opinion, so move on.
That is an opinion and that's my fact, it's two miles. And I've got more to say.
Okay, thank you. Yes? Exactly. Exactly. Thank you. Okay, um, you've heard, uh, from the people that have spoken and he's absolutely right. This is a rezoning hearing. So we're going to close the public hearing and now, uh, council, uh, what are some of your thoughts?
Ms. Martin, I was, I was a bit confused when I read through this. Our planning board moved to deny this rezoning request. But at the very front, where it tells us what action is that you would like for us to take, I guess you, you advise us to approve it. What's, what's the difference? What did the zoning people rely on versus what you were agreeing to?
Well, coming from a planning standpoint, I'm looking at the uses that's currently there in place. The zoning map and the future land use map is already inconsistent, but you still have those uses within that area. So you have B1 right diagonally from it. So that's what I was going based off of. But even though they denied it, it's still up to the town council to make final. Because like I stated before, you have those three, three main points. You have your zoning map that shows all, majority agriculture and that one piece of B1. Your land uses, you have agriculture, residential and commercial. And then your future land use map is only slated for low density and medium density residential. And it's, yes, it can be a minute to change as a guide, but it still wasn't consistent, not consistent with the zoning. The zoning and future land use map is not consistent in that area.
But I guess the comprehensive plan that we did just enact did show that whole area as being...
Residential.
Residential, medium density and low density.
Yes, whereas you already have commercial and agriculture uses there.
Any other comments?
I guess I just have questions. Um, is it town water and sewer out there? Um, taxes, what, what are we receiving in taxes?
So this property is not in town limits. It's in the ETK. So if it does get developed, any additional property taxes from that new development do not come to the town. We do have a water main on Oak Level Road at East Spring Hope Road that this property could tie into if they chose to. Without annexation, they would pay double the rate for water. With annexation, um, obviously then their taxes would come, they would, they would have the town's tax levy upon them in addition to the counties, but they could get the water at the regular rates. And it is eligible for a satellite annexation. They would choose to go that way.
Any other thoughts?
And if this, and if this does get approved, if you do decide to approve it, this is not the last step because it still will have to go before our technical review committee as a design, I'm sorry, as a development plan review. Whereas you have myself from planning, representing the planning department, then you will have, um, public works director and supervisor as well as NC DOT and our engineering consultant to also review and have these things in place as well as we have our landscaping requirements and buffer requirements that's in our zoning ordinance. So this is not the last step that it will have to go through.
And remember, all we look at is the land, the zoning. That's all you need to consider tonight. Ms. Hinton, do you have any thoughts?
I'm thinking there's a lot of inconsistency in that crossroads. You have three businesses already there, which tells me that how can you deny someone from building the business on the other one?
I have a hard time trying to get there too.
What about, Ms. Hinton, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, for one thing, the businesses that were there have been there for quite a long while and, you know, we just went through the tedious process and very expensive process of having the comprehensive plan developed, um, primarily because prior to it, we were running into situations where it was very hard to define what was supposed to be within an area and what wasn't. So, um, I personally am, am inclined to want to go with what our comp plan and zoning code recommends.
I have to agree. I'm looking at these other businesses and none of them are on, uh, farmland acreage. And I think changing that one little corner of that parcel is going to encourage that whole section to become B1 following.
Yes.
And it's going to make it that much harder if we approve this than truly the next person who applies for B1 right next to it. We would be inconsistent to say no.
Yes.
Um, I think if this is supposed to be residential, I think that would be what we reserve this, this for, according to our comprehensive plan.
So do I hear a motion one way or the other?
I think the only, I, I'm too looking at benefits to the town. You know, if we're not receiving any tax revenue from this going in there, uh, water and sewer is not a definite, um...
Please, could, could you come to the podium when you speak so we can pick it up on the audio? Thank you.
If, 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 we will, we will ask for annexation and to get the city water and to get into the city limits if, if that's the, the council's wishes. That's not a problem. So you can get the tax benefit from it.
I think we just all have to be okay with the fact that this, this whole swath then might not be residential.
Yeah.
You have to what?
We would all have to be okay with the fact that doing this might result in this whole swath of land no longer going to residential.
We, we will have opened ourselves up to that if we make this provision and rezon.
But I feel like at the same time we're penalizing.
That's my concern, that we're penalizing.
Just because that's been open land for all these years.
Even though I can understand the rest, you know, and everything, but... But anything else that came would have to be voted on, wouldn't it? To go out there if there was a business and you could out say, look...
Yes, but my point is if a, if a business comes next and they want to abut this business, what would be our reasoning to say no? If we've already opened that door? But, I mean, the, the, the difference of coming in and annexing in and, um, hooking up to water and sewer does give the town a benefit then.
So do I hear a motion one way or the other?
I would offer a motion to approve the rezoning request. And I do appreciate that the hard work and the research that, that is done. But, uh, to put it frankly, if Dollar General wants to build a building, throw a money out of black hole, let them do it. So I, I, I offer to approve.
Conditional upon annexation into town?
Right.
And hooking up to water sewer?
Yes, on that condition.
Can you not make that?
I'm sure you do that.
You can't do it now.
Come, come to that next time.
Yeah, look at that later on.
I'll second your motion.
All those in favor of approving it, let it be known by say and I.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Mayor?
So, um, my only concern is I can understand them coming out and, um, because of the other businesses there, but I don't want anything else to come there, you know? And would we have to vote on that to approve it? And I certainly understand where the town could benefit from, um, the water usage and it being annexed into our town. So by looking at the big picture for everybody, I would have to vote for it. When I look at all the citizens and what's good for all the citizens. The next item on our agenda is...
Mayor, before you move on, could you announce what the council's decision?
It was...
A motion and second to rezon?
And it was two... It was a two-two vote.
Two-two vote with...
And then I voted the third vote, right.
To approve.
To approve, correct. The next item on our agenda is, um, the special event permit.
Boy, why don't you start this off?
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
We have quite a few special event permits that we've submitted for our events throughout the year. Um, tried to put them on, all on one day to, to make it easy. I'm going to briefly go through them, but please let me know if you want some additional information. Um, the first one we have coming up is our spring concert series. We have three dates for that on March seventeenth, featuring Matty Beggs. April twenty-first, featuring Runaway Ostrich. And May nineteenth, featuring The Dogwoods. Um, that event, the March and May dates are at Stony Creek Park with the April date being at the Nashville Farmers Market. Uh, that event does feature live music, food trucks, alcohol. Um, no streets will be blocked for, for that event.
Uh, go ahead. There needs to be a correction here in paperwork submitted. You said March seventeenth, but on our, on mine it says March forty-seventh. So that should be seventeen.
Apologies, that is March seventeenth. We will correct that. Thank you. The next one we have is our Egg Siding Saturday event, which we plan to have on April first from ten to noon. Um, we did that event for the first time last year. It featured a Easter egg hunt followed by carnival style games, some egg related activities, some family games, pictures with the Easter bunny. Um, that event, we do plan to have food trucks and, um, DJ for live music. No streets are required to be closed for that event. The next one we have is for the Nashville Farmers Market. Um, last year we did try to have, uh, live entertainment and food trucks and alcohol on a weekly basis. We would like to do that again this year. Um, we are scheduled to open the farmers market on April twenty-first, which is a Friday from three to seven. And we plan on continuing every Friday through October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. We then would have two additional markets, one on November seventeenth and one on December fifteenth. So, um, again, no streets are required to be blocked for that, but it does feature food truck, live music and alcohol. And the next one we have is the downtown Halloween trick or treating. Um, this is an event that we've held for the past two years. Um, this past year, we partnered with the Nashville Chamber of Commerce, the police department, fire department, Nash County Sheriff's Office and the Harold D. Cooley Library. Um, I think that, that event went very well. We plan on doing it, uh, in a very similar fashion this year. Um, that event, uh, we plan on having food trucks, amplified music, and it will require the closing of, um, streets. The streets that were, uh, that we would like to close, um, is Washington Street between Barnes Street and Austin Street and a section of Body Street between Washington Street and Church Street. And that would be closed on October twenty-seventh from three PM to eight PM. So that is, uh, the events I have. If you have any questions, I think we do have a couple more special event permit requests outside the town.
Travis, run in.
Travis, maybe before you go, Cliff, would you mind with the Blooming Festival?
Oh, nothing.
For the chamber's request?
Okay.
In my instructions.
According to Cindy, this, uh, uh, the deal would be on May the twelfth to close Washington Street at ten AM from Barnes to Austin, including Drake Streets remain closed until midnight of May thirteenth. Uh, on the parade date, May thirteenth, additional streets would need to be closed for parade lineup. And they're listed, uh, First Street from Washington to Lloyd Park, East Cedar to First, East Elm Street to First Street, Thorn Street from Elm to Cedar, West Washington from Cooley Manor to North Austin Street, North Austin Street to East Center, Cedar. Um, requesting lumber in Center and lumber in Elm Street have officers or cones due to traffic slipping through, causing safety issues. Uh, close the parade routes at the time of the parade. South Austin from the intersection of Washington, Austin to Church Street and Church Street from Church to Body. Um, I know I work part of the field down at, at the cemetery and it can get a little wild sometimes, but, uh, we would ask this. Hopefully we, uh... Hopefully we'll have a, this is the 25th year, so we're hoping there'll be a, a good celebration, a big celebration, whether we cooperate, everything will go smoothly.
Any questions?
Any questions? I have just one request, actually, bringing up the cemetery. Can we just remind all those who are lining up by the cemetery that that is a place of respect, you know, not to be sitting on any gravestones, not to be placing any water bottles or anything like that? Thank you.
We try.
I'm sure you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we have one more, Travis.
Hey, everyone. So this is for the Nashville NC Running Festival. I was in front of you last year for the first time, asking for the same permission. So this year, asking for the same permission, other than the change in location. Last year, we held it at the Elks Lodge in the Birchwood Community. This year, I would ask that we held it downtown, several reasons to, you know, I want this to be Nashville's race, so that's the best thing. Best part to be is just to have it in the center of town. I can go through some statistics, but the request, I guess on the, on the special events request is to close West Washington Street from Austin to Drake Street.
For how long?
So I have talked with the Nashville Police, and, and we think, so it is the October, the 28th is a Saturday for the event. The, the Halloween event that the town is planning, that's the night before. So it will work out if it's just a continuation, is my understanding based on talking with them. So we would close it at least 5 a.m. to essentially 5 p.m. on October 28th.
Now.
My concern is with the merchants.
The merchants.
Having the streets closed for two days.
Garrett from the Painted Teacher did bring that up. Saturday is their biggest day, and so her concern was that it would not allow for any of the patrons to park at all. And so we had come up with some other possible scenarios of rerouting to the junction, rerouting to the baseball fields at the elementary school, rerouting to several different locations, but I thought maybe Sunday was discussed.
I thought, thought through it out there. I also talked to another, so I'm getting help timing with a, you know, professional timer. I'm doing Run the East this year, they're one of the biggest in, based out of Greenville in eastern North Carolina, and he said he reckon, he does not recommend a Sunday race just from, you know, church and people and other things. So I would avoid Sunday, keep it on Saturday and discuss.
Saturday, if you wanted to stay downtown, one of the alternatives too was to close the street down from the, the east side, no, the west side, sorry, of, what did I write to you? Basically the Battleship area. So close down from Austin to Body Street, so that patrons can still, it'll be a reroute, but patrons can still get in and out off of Body Street and still have Washington Street in front of the, the shops, but it'll still give you that downtown feel, and you can set up the band and the vendors and all at the admin building instead of the courthouse. Is that a potential?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I'd, I'd hate to, you know, really knock the, the businesses down, because Friday, you know how it is with the Halloween?
Oh, yeah.
And if that's the day that they do the trick-or-treating as well, it's already going to be shut down several times throughout that day. And then to back-to-back, to do that to them, it's too much. So yeah, if we could do just the Battleship area shutting down, I think that that would be less of a burden, and it might even increase business with some foot traffic that might head over to the shops.
Mayor, we, we do have on our agenda for a public hearing on this, so maybe at this time you'd like to go on the public hearing and see if anybody wants to come forth with comments on any of the requests?
Okay, at this time we'll go into a public hearing. Anyone have any comments about this or any input on it?
Garrett did want to be here tonight, but she had another engagement, so.
I would just echo about the businesses downtown, if you can work out something. I think Friday, mid-afternoon shutting down and all day, Saturday is a, is a, is a lot as far as that concerned. I think everyone that I have talked to downtown is very supportive of this event, wants it to happen, but maybe it can either be on the transition somewhere, that county parking lot possibly, but I think is an alternative, but I think shutting down entire Washington Street, right, would be kind of tough for businesses.
So Travis, are you willing to work with us and work it out for a, a good route that will be agreeable with you and, you know, that group of merchants downtown?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, this event's always been to be a positive.
Absolutely. So we'll get with you about that, which streets we can, you know, close to benefit? Yes, Louise?
I was thinking, last year was that at the Elks Lodge?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that an alternative?
It could be.
Because that was very successful.
It was.
But some of the runners, they, they had to go around many, many times, and that was sort of, I heard a little discouraging conversation that night.
Yeah, I mean, the idea, I guess originally was always to kind of make it more part of the town, some to try to have it inside the town. You know, I was thinking last year, folks coming from Raleigh kind of could go around, and they could, you know, go down Salisbury where that road is and never kind of go downtown. People from Rocky Mount could kind of go around town. So it was never really, they didn't have to go into town, and I would like it, or the thought is to, you know, bring more people to town in the merchant.
Travis, a question. The, the run itself doesn't require the streets to be shut down, correct?
Correct. So where I'm proposing it, we will shut the roads down for the start and finish line. So based on what we're talking about right now, it's just where the Battleship is. So I would think of where the start and finish line would be somewhere around there, and they would close down that part of West Washington Street to get the start and the finish, but the remaining roads would not be closed.
So then traffic, traveling on Washington, heading east, they would turn north on Body, Church, to Austin, and then get back onto Washington?
Or whatever is recommended.
Chief, you have any concerns with, how, how do you think that would work?
This will be a Saturday, a lot of truck drivers, farmers coming through town, and when they come up to go to Austin Street, Body Street, when they come from Close Corner, there's going to be a really big mess, because at that time of year, there's going to be cockpiggers and combines, and everything coming through town. Big trucks. Yeah.
It's going to be a tight term.
Yes, ma'am.
I, uh, the Battleship, I understand moving to the Battleship to free up the, the, the traffic for our downtown businesses, but something nobody has mentioned yet, he said you got people coming from Raleigh, Greenville, everywhere else. If we could put it back at the Elks Lodge, then you've got places for people to park that will not interrupt the rest of the traffic. If you put your start-finish line in the block of the Battleship, where are all these people going to park? They're going to be all down, all downtown, they're going to be in the parking lot for the.
The merchants.
For the merchants, they're going to be, you know. So I think, I'm not against it, but I think putting it downtown, like you keep it downtown, would create another, another problem for us.
Some other options, though, were the picnic shelter over by the community center, so the elementary school, and there could be parking on grass, I guess, over there. The baseball fields at the elementary school, Glover Park, and the junction. The junction still has that huge parking area. If you wanted to start and finish at the junction, you could even have people run through downtown.
I think we've got some options, opening the Battleship.
Kate, would you like to get with Travis, the police chief, and work out a good route that will work for everybody?
Sure.
Home is two days in a row, it's just a long.
Right, right. If it, yeah, if it was another month, I don't think this would be a big problem.
But we will work it out, we'll make it happen.
Right, and everyone really is excited for it to come back again, and they are super thankful to you for doing this. So don't think it's a negative thing at all.
So if you would just find a time that you could get together, have a council representative, and then the police chief, and then Travis, to make it work for everybody, that would be great. Thank you, Travis, and everybody else.
Mayor, before you move on, our attorney would like to give some information on this topic, of special use permits.
Yeah, if I may, just offer some brief advice. Typically with these kind of special events, I know, I noticed that in the applications that the town, council has discretion to ask for certificates of insurance, just from a liability standpoint, definitely recommend that these, they provide, the applicants provide certificates of insurance, adding the town as an additional insured. Another kind of just belt and suspenders kind of thing is a lot of times we do indemnification or hold harmless agreements. They're real quick, just a paragraph. You can certainly approve these tonight, pursuant to, you know, submission of certificates of insurance and/or indemnity agreements if you so choose. I just wanted to, that, that is my advice.
Thank you.
Well, that's what you're here for, Emily.
Should we be changing our application then to just require those immediately, so we don't have to go through this again?
I would.
Yes.
We have to do that. And also with the Blooming Festival, the DOT requires the council pass a resolution for that event, and that resolution is. And with regard to the Running Festival, if the council is not going to approve what Travis has put forth in the packet, we'll have to reschedule a public hearing on alternate. Whatever publication, advanced publication deadlines, probably won't be able to do that till the first meeting in March.
Okay. Well, do I hear a motion that we approve the Blooming Festival, their resolution for the Blooming Festival? Second? All those in favor, let it be known by say or not. So we do have that resolution, and then you'll work out everything with Travis, and we'll have that at the next meeting, on the March meeting.
Mayor, could you get a motion and second to approve the rest of the special use permits on the agenda with the.
I've got you, so that after we've gotten the Blooming Festival. So do I hear?
Move to approve the special permits, special use permits for these festivals.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by say or not.
Aye.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is something we don't like to hear, but anyway, the well number four rehabilitation, Lee?
Hey.
Hey.
Excuse me. So we're all aware that ARM, Applied Resource Management, recently finished up the rehab of well number five on North First Street, or First Street Extension. It was successful, water, the well is clean, the water's clean, and we've just signed a contract with the Wooten Company to be our engineer for reviewing our appropriate documents with DEQ to re-permit that well. And the next steps will be taking their recommendations and getting a pump and motor installed to put well number five back into production. So that's, that's on track as expected, and everything is going smoothly. So because well number five has been, the rehab was successful, we've done some internal discussions about producing as much water as we can ourselves to reduce our, our costs with the city of Rocky Mount. So looking at well number two and number four, which are existing wells that are currently out of service for maintenance-related issues, we reached out to ARM. They, they determined, and we agreed, that well number four would be a good candidate to pursue another rehabilitation on. Historical records have shown us that that well has produced about approximately, whatever you want to call it, 1.2 million gallons a month, which is in line with what well number five and number seven have and are producing. And we've, we've, we've had ARM submit a proposal. It's about 43,000 to conduct a rehab. That does not include the price of, or the cost of site upgrades, which are estimated, call it six, call it six to 12,000, and does not include the price of a pump, nor the engineering. So it would be right there where we're at with number five, about 40,000 for the rehab, and give or take 20,000 for the remaining expenses. With that, the Finance Department has determined that the town would save approximately 108,000 over the course of 10 years by producing an additional 1.2 million gallons a month. So we're here tonight to give you this information, and we'd like you to consider moving forward with signing this contract with Applied Resource Management and getting the rehab of well number four underway.
Do you have any questions, Felice?
So, so is five back online or not online?
It is not online, it's getting the drawdown results, our engineering firm, they'll be here Thursday for a site visit, and we'll begin their evaluation.
So we have not put it online yet?
Correct.
Lee, six and seven are up and running.
Correct.
So you said this well's going to cost how much to get it going?
Seventy-eight thousand.
Seventy-eight thousand dollars, thirty, seventy-eight, eighty.
Seventy-eight, eighty.
I'm all for being more self-sufficient, and I'm all for saving money, but I mean, that's, that's a really big number to only save 108,000 dollars after 10 years. Are there, is there like grant funding opportunities for things like this? Is there any alternative funding?
Not that I'm aware of. So if, if you were really to condense it down, call it right 40 for the rehab, if prices haven't changed too much, you know, 15 to 20 for the pump, and five for engineering. That's, that's still right there at close to seven.
But four's, four's still pumping right now, right?
Uh, four and, well, number four and two have been out of service at least, yeah, five or six years.
Kate, that 108 figure, that's reimbursement cost of that, and upfitting the well, the pump every five years.
So it includes all of that?
About a dollar a month, every month for the foreseeable future.
It includes all of that?
Yeah, it includes all of that.
Okay. That helps.
That does help.
So four, the pump is not working, or is it?
There is no pump in number four.
There is no pump there.
Right, it was removed when it was determined to have failed, and so the well's been sitting unused, so the wa, you know, the, the video inspection showed that it definitely could use a rehab.
That's the scrubbing and stuff that we were talking about, going through pipes and stuff?
Yep.
But if we just did the scrubbing and stuff through the pipes, do we still have the, the pump to put back in there and go back to work?
No, we're starting from, we're, we've got a well, and we're starting at a rehab. We'd still need the motor, the engineering, or I'm sorry, the pump, the engineering, and some small site upgrades.
But we took, but we took that out of the way of when it stopped pumping, I mean, when it stopped producing, right?
But the, the pump didn't work.
The pump does work, so.
It burned out.
Yeah, that's essentially what, when we say it's failed, it's the.
It burned out.
The pump and motor have.
And at the time, we, we chose not to re-put a new pump in it because we were having water quality issues, and what we found with well number five, do that chemical scrub, it really cleans up the water coming out of those wells. And ARM is advising us that we could see similar results for well number four as we've had in well number five, which would then make it a good quality water source once again, that we, we could put into the system without having complaints of discoloration. I think there were some odor complaints from that well, too. Now, no guarantee, but our experience with well number five, those things were cleaned up.
How does the council feel about this? Let's get five completely back online and see how it does before we start signing a contract to go to number four to do another.
When is five going to be fully online again?
Probably two months, I mean.
At least two months.
Wooten has to do the re permitting, submit that to NCDQ.
The last one got hung up at the state for at least two months.
Yeah, but if we go ahead and start on something else, and it turns out that two months down the road, number five still ain't solved our problem, then we got money invested in two wells that ain't solving the problem. I would say let's, let's wait on this for right now, on four. That's my opinion.
Funds for this will come from the Enterprise Fund, for us.
Yes, and, and our, our Enterprise Fund is, is doing nicely at the moment. Very nice.
Okay. But we may need to, we may need to go back and put. But we may need to, we may need to go back and put some more money in five.
I'd like to remind everybody that during Hurricane Floyd, our wells were required to sustain us.
That's why we might need to get as many going as we can.
So, yeah, we need to revisit this if we don't decide.
So water quality tests and all of that will be complete two months, we'd be able to know that well five is doing well?
Yeah, we're hoping that well five will be pumping. It'll be the end of two months, but that's, that's kind of the goal.
Okay. I'm okay with either okaying it right now or holding off.
So?
If you both want to hold off, we can hold off.
I suggest let's hold off and see what five's going to do. It is a motion.
So Larry's made a motion that we just hold off and check out number five. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Get five going and then we'll look at number four. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the recreation center lease extension.
Hello, yep. So an update on the rec center. I talked to Dawson Construction Services this morning. They are about 75% done with our plans. We have a meeting scheduled with them tomorrow to go look at the building, make sure the plans are what we need, and then we'll move forward with that. We're still hoping to have those completed in the next one to two weeks, so very soon to get that done. Soon as those are done, of course, we'll have to put together an RFP and bid that out for a contractor to come in and do that work. We do not foresee that being done by June 30th, which is when the current lease runs out at our building at 108 South Body. So we see it necessary to extend that just to not interrupt services, allow us to continue planning programs as we are without having any interruption there. Mr. Williams, the building owner, is willing to extend that lease for six months at the rate of $1,800 a month for six months. And what you have in front of you is a resolution allowing us to extend that lease agreement for six months.
Is that what we're paying them for?
Currently, we're paying 1350 a month.
Is there any way we could renegotiate that lease amount since we're leaving an outfitted kitchen behind?
So when the, when we originally discussed the current lease agreement with Mr. Williams, he did have a tiered level for the next five years that eventually got us to 2,000 a month is what he was looking for. I don't foresee him willing to come, come down off that 1,800 a month number, but I mean, we can, we can ask. I just don't, I don't foresee it going any lower than that.
Well, I think especially since we're asking for a month to month from that point, right?
It's for six months.
But then we're leaving behind a kitchen that we paid for.
So, council, what do you think? We've got to either approve this resolution, extend the lease on 108 South Body Street or...
I'll move out.
Or move out of the street.
And nowhere to go.
That's true.
I move, I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Oh, no, Miss Hen said that. Sorry. The next item on our agenda is our last item, and that is personnel.
Good evening, mayor and council. We did have five personnel policy changes that were recommended this time. The first one is the employee referral bonus. We just changed the timeframe to six months. Some employees serve a year probation, some serve six months. We want to make it a universal timeframe for all employees to receive that bonus if they were referring someone new. We also added in there that if the person referring the employee is involved in the hiring process, such as the HR director, town manager, department head, or anybody that has a hiring, making decision not to be eligible for that bonus. The second item was the holiday bonus pay. Each year, we give employees typically $100 around Christmas time, full-time employees, 50 for part-time. I think this past year, if they worked under $500, we gave them 25. So this just states that the town manager has the final approval and, you know, we'll use the budget amount as allotted. The next item was the overtime pay provisions. So we added in here, if an employee's called in outside of their normal hours, such as on a holiday, they would get overtime or comp time at time and a half unless they're an exempt employee, they'd get comp time at one time. The next item was the adverse weather leave. Currently, if an employee's unable to work or telework, we give them admin leave. We would still do that with this policy. We did add in here clarification for telework and then we also put, if they were unable to be off their essential personnel, that they would also earn admin leave instead of comp time. That way, if the employee left, we wouldn't have to pay out the comp time. And we also added to this policy, the town manager will give the final approval as to who will receive the admin leave and how much they would receive. The last item, the disciplinary action, we just kind of further clarified the policy, added the statement in discretion of the town manager. A town employee may be disciplined up to and including dismissal without application of following procedures. That's actually what we have in place now. And then further down, we just added, depending on the nature and severity of the performance problems, certain violations may surpass the performance coaching process and go straight to disciplinary action. And the steps outlined below. That's it for this time.
Thank you, Matthew, very much. Are there any questions for Matthew? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the recommended changes to the town of national personnel policy?
Well, Matthew and I worked on these together, so, you know, the one about the callback, I think all these are necessary and advisable to have in here. Really cleans up some stuff that we've had employees question and bring to us different scenarios, these resolve those.
Matt, on the callback, are our employees guaranteed a certain number of hours on the callback?
Just two.
Two hours of pay, but of course, if they weren't more than that, yeah, they would get their overtime pay.
Minimum's two hours.
We did vote on that. We did. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything else to say, Randy?
No, I'm good, mayor and council. Thank you.
Council members, if you have anything...
Did you guys vote on the...
We did.
Personnel policy?
We didn't have...
You were a rubber.
That's what, we didn't. Miss Hen had a rub and so we didn't, but we had a motion and a second, so all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries to approve.
No motion, no second?
No second either.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
You started, Hogan.
I'll speak to it.
Okay, good. Council, any comments?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I know we had a couple of things that could have been contentious and everyone was just on their best behavior, very respectful, and we appreciate it. And also just the interest, there was a lot of people here tonight, it was wonderful.
Any other comments? Thank you very much and have a good rest of the week and we hope to see you at the next council meeting. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.